Thank you all for being with us today, the 20th of August, for our council meeting. At this time, I'll accept a motion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm in.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. McGilvery. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. If the clerk would note that Mr. Guines is out of the room. I know he's in the building somewhere. There he is. He's appeared on the scene.
Yeah.
All right, that brings us to the mayor's report, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, welcome everyone to our council meeting, and that concludes my report.
Another excellent report, Mr. Mayor. That brings, there are no departmental reports. That brings us to council reports. We'll start with Mr. Lawrence in Ward One.
We dedicated Camille Memorial Saturday morning. Did a great job putting that thing back down. It won't be affected by hurricanes and the water, because they laid it down, but it really looks good right there behind the Golden Fishman. So we started adding a lot of things to the maritime sea museum. So when you go down, there's a lot of things you can look at. And I have a question. Who handles underneath the interstate, the gate and the fence that's down?
It's parked underneath the interstate.
Under the interstate. You know, where they had the pickleball court on each side.
It should be MDOT, but we've been kind of doing it as a courtesy when we can.
So who we have to turn it into? You have to do that or what?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure. Sorry, I didn't, I'm not exactly sure what the protocol is, but with regard to MDOT, that's their ballgame, but we've been doing it when we need to.
Well, we got a little.
Oh, we already, so it is our control, if we leased it. Both sides of Howard Avenue underneath the interstate, well, that's us.
This is the fence and the gate on the east side is down. So I don't know, I don't know, we just said it's going to put it back up.
We'll check on that, but I think it's Parks and Rec where we need to. The fence is down underneath interstate, on the how hop, at the how hop, right?
They're trying to keep everything, you know, keep them from staying underneath there. So they took the fence and the gate, they kind of tore that down right there.
Councilman, they notified me of that yesterday, and I asked Public Works to go and investigate it. I didn't get a report back from them, but I'll ask.
Well, I talked to Sherri Bell today.
It looks to me like the fence just fell down.
Right. So I went down and looked at it, you know. That's why I just said I checked to see if we could do that, or have to get someone else to do it. It's just to protect them from staying underneath. She went there, like you said, she cleaned everything up. The park did, you know, because you had all the people living under there. And that's what happens when that gate and that fence is down. They all start staying underneath there. And now we had the pickleball court right up front of that. So it's right down that side there, as you go down the interstate. So I just want to make sure we pile up on that.
South of Howard Avenue.
Yeah, it's between there, between there and the roundabout.
Good.
All right, thank you.
I probably checked on it yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Guines in Ward Two.
Yes, just like to acknowledge this weekend coming up, Sunday, we have the Hall of Fame for the city of Biloxi. So come on out, three o'clock, Sunday. And this evening, after our meeting, I would like to close it out in honor of a good friend of ours, George Parks, who served on the election voting committee, and also was a, served on the employees committee for the city of Biloxi. So I'd like to close out the meeting, and my good friend George Parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Ms. Newman in Ward Three.
Yes, can I get an update on vacating the homeless off of the Broadwater property that was supposed to be done by the 16th? What's going on with that?
Councilwoman, that operation is on hold right now, waiting for the, yeah, the owners of the property to get their contractor in there. It was originally scheduled to start today, yesterday, but they got a little, they didn't get their contractor on site.
Did they vacate?
We're talking about, we're talking about only the area between just Ira Street to the, to the east of, all the way over to, what the hell is this?
Baker Street.
Baker, between Baker and Ira, and from the railroad track north. So they're ready to go, we just need, waiting to get started.
She was asking the homeless are vacated the property.
Yeah.
They are vacated.
The police department, over the last week, has been in there and met with as many of them as possible, and handed out flyers, and reminded them that they had to be gone by this week.
Okay. For whatever reason, the residents are up in arms, saying that they were told that they're not going to be cleaning up the property as promised, so they're worried that there's still going to be an issue. So can we keep, you know, a handle on that, and whatever we can do legally?
It's going to be clean.
Okay.
It's going to be clean.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. McGilvery in Ward Four.
Yes, just one comment. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for, I met with Ms. Christie and Billy Ray last week or two, and about a couple of items, and it was very informative, the meeting I had with both of them. I was amazed, really, to see just what's done on a daily basis, weekly basis, the different projects they do. It was very eye-opening and informative, and they did a great job speaking to them, and I thank you for that, and I thank them for it as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin in Ward Six.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple things. I'd like to thank Public Works for getting to Skeet Hunt, and also Hickman Road, and cleaning up the ditches, and the side of the roads and everything, getting them cleaned up a little bit. I know y'all are taxed, but hopefully later on today, if we get to the Public Works budget, that not only do we talk about the budget from dollar standpoint, and resources, that we talk about being able to hit goals, and that includes, in all wards, keeping the curbs and ditches kind of like they should look, and making sure you have the right, whether it's contractual services, or the right staffing levels, and the right equipment, that we're able to hit that goal with our budget allocations. Also, to Community Development Director Creel responding to a request to investigate a complaint by a resident, that there was debris and other refuse across from her property. I haven't had a chance to go out to the property and talk to the owners, like I told you I would, but I'm going to get to that this week, and hopefully there'll be an understanding of how and when to put that trash and garbage out there. Let's see. I'd also, in addition to Councilman Guines wanting to recognize Mr. Parks, I had a dear friend pass away yesterday morning, Mr. Bill Lady. Some of you may know Mr. Lady, some of you may not. He's a resident of Hancock County. He was instrumental. He was on the additional, I guess, board to do some research to bring crews in the coast, to the Mississippi Gulf Coast. He's always been involved in tourism, way back when, pre-gaming, and he suffered a stroke a little over two years ago, and couldn't really recover from that. But we owe him a debt of gratitude all along the Mississippi Gulf Coast for what he means to tourism, what he means to our community health, and hopefully we can memorialize him in the days to come. And I'd like to close this meeting, because he certainly had a fond place in his heart for Biloxi. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. Mr. Schumaker in Ward Seven.
Just a couple things. Thank you to Public Works. Like Councilman Glavin said, they, I have seen them, they were out cutting grass today in Ward Seven, and the easements and some of the ditches. And we had had an issue at Kaylee Cove and Wool Market Road by the library, and it had been somewhat of an issue. The water was pooling up in the street, and I know this past week, they were out there, spent a lot of time out there, and were able to clean the ditches, I think dig some out. So I'm sure that's going to, going to help that situation. And I know that there was some times when the library had to close, I think the water was so bad. So hopefully that's going to work. And so, again, I appreciate them getting out there, and they got on that pretty quick. And I know it's hot, and I know they're shorthanded, and I know I say enough negative about them. Not negative, just sometimes I beat them up a little bit on grass and drainage, but I do, I appreciate them getting out there so fast. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Couple of things. There's such a demand for pickleball. Is there a possibility, or any reason, we couldn't open the Snyder Center in the evenings? Maybe, I think the end of the workday is at five o'clock, maybe just open the courts from six to eight, or six to nine, a couple of days a week. Is that doable?
I'm sure it is. Jamie, I'm not sure what conflicts we have as far as other scheduled folks for that at night, for pickleball. Look into that.
Just, just something, something to think about. Thank you. A reminder, Chief Miller, if you would, present a list of special events that have been approved for September. Also, I'd make a request that, at the second council meeting of each month in the future, that a personnel report be presented to the council. Mr. Schumaker, if you'd hand that to Mr. Abid, because attorneys are here to help us. Thank you, Mr. Abid. It looks a little complicated, but it's not. I understand that a position vacancy report can be printed through Human Resources, and I know in the center section on the right, promotions, demotions, new hires, et cetera, that's presented at the Civil Service Commission meeting monthly. And then summary at the top right of how many positions we have in each department, and how many are vacant. And then the only thing that's going to retire, require a little time, but I think if it's tracked, it's not that difficult, is you see for merit pay by department, how many each month, and what that total amount was. So if there are questions, I'm available after this. That's, some of us just trying to get an idea of the ebb and flow of employees and how we're staffed. That concludes my report.
Mayor.
So we'll move on to the public agenda with citizens' comments. Anyone who wishes to speak has three minutes to speak. We'll set aside up to 45 minutes for this portion of the agenda. If you're recognized to speak, come up to the chair and table, sign in if you've not done so. State your name, so that the clerk can record it accurately. And we want to hear nothing but good things today. Ta-dum-bum. This is a hard room to work. Okay. So with that being said, is there anybody on my right, your left, that would like to address the council or administration? Anybody on my right, your left? Anybody on my, yes, sir. Come up, please.
Councilman?
Mr. Kaneci, welcome.
My name is Ray Kaneci.
Come on up, have a seat.
That's a little bit too.
Well, we have to, we have to.
I want to be back in with the post.
Okay, well.
Talking to Mike.
Yep, grab the mic, because we want the world that's tuning in when we post these videos to know what you're saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just like you got to get close to counting pills. You got to get close to the mic.
First of all, thank y'all. Thank you. Congratulations Rodney for your victory. It used to be an award, but now you're not. I have to put up with Paul, but anyway, it's okay. Mr. Mayor and the council, I just want to tell you a story about why Paul and I have been talking about things. And thanks to Chief Miller, over the years, he's helped me control the traffic on Old Bay Road. I live on a corner of Old Bay Road and Linwood Drive. A few months ago, I was checking my mail, and almost got killed, because one of the drivers was not driving 25 miles an hour. I know it's a shortcut to get off a pass road. But, you know, when I check my mail, I have a fear of getting hit, okay? So, not only that, since we live on a corner of Linwood, one day, I was checking, pulling in my trash bucket, and a young lady with two kids came around a 90-degree turn, which still 25 mile an hour, which should be 15. But anyway, almost got hit again, okay? Again, I don't think people have to worry about getting hit when they're in their own home, when they're own residence. I just appreciate. Now, again, I want to thank Paul and Chief Miller for helping with the stop signs, and I know it's helped, but people don't even pay attention to them. I've been noticing it, and y'all have been, the police have been trying, but you can't be there all the time, and I understand that. There's more serious things that go on. So I get, what I like to recommend, and I don't know how the process works, but if we can think about some kind of plan to put in process of like bump, speed bumps. Now, I don't know the liability of all of this, but I want to go on record to make sure you have that I almost got killed, okay? Please. This is serious, okay? Speed limit in our Bay Vista area is 25, and the speed limit in other residential areas like River Place is 15, okay? Now, again, to me, that's not right. River Place is a more updated community, old section, whatever. Ours is not. We live in Bay Vista, and it's a little bit older.
Your three minutes is up, Mr. Kaneci.
Well, I appreciate my time. Thank you.
And you can always speak with Chief Miller later, or myself later, if you wish. Thank you. It's good to see you again.
Thank y'all.
Anybody else on my right, your left? Anybody on my left, your right? Mr. Silvestro.
Hi.
We know who you are now.
Yes, you do. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Chief Miller and his men. Do an amazing job in our neighborhood, what they've helped do us, for us. And I listen to a lot of people that come up here, which have concerns in their neighborhood, and if they're worried about someone getting hit, we have people going 90 miles an hour on our street. So anyway, I don't want to get into, everyone has worked hard, the mayor, chief. People are a little bit upset. They pushed the people out of the woods. They're moving their way back in. More, I understand the people who own the Broadwater property. They've run into situations. Listen, it's a lot of money, it's a big job. You can't show up with two lawnmowers. But ending that way, there's a old school that sits there, and I have reached out to the superintendent a few times about how the people have moved into the dugout there. Bad seeds sitting by the kids, and yesterday, I reported a man shooting a gun. Might have been a BB gun, I don't know, but anyway, that property that's at that corner should be used for something, in my opinion. Appreciate everything everyone's done, but I just want everyone to kind of ask themselves. There's a pavilion right there by the lighthouse. I think everyone knows it. It's out on the beach, sand. You know where I'm talking about? Right out here by the lighthouse. For the last six months, the same group of people has been, have been sitting there, and I've had a lot of people explain to me that it's not good, and I've watched them chase people away. They have not left. They just go to the bathroom. And, long story short, I went on Facebook, and in 24 hours, they're gone. Gentlemen took care of it. I don't know who, I don't know why. I'm sure all, everyone here is trying. But if it's that simple, that I get involved in something, and it gets, people do things, then maybe we should try doing things a better way, or a different way, or I'll volunteer to help. But we all just want the city to look better, and everyone to be safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestro. Anybody else on my left, your right? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Robert Schwartz, attorney with Schwartz, Orgler, Jordan, and Williams. My address is P.O. Box 4862, Biloxi, 39535. I serve as counsel to Elliott Holmes, that has two applications specifically pending today for the Coral Breeze development. We are, of course, here to answer any questions that the council might have related to those applications. Specifically, there's a request for the approval of a PD-1 planned development infill district master plan. In addition, there is a request for a waiver. My understanding, although I wasn't present at the last meeting, is that at least one council member had a question, or a request, as to two items on the development. One was a request that larger lot lines be included, which was done by the developer. The second was a request that numbered parking and assigned parking be present for each unit. That was also accomplished, and the package that you have before you reflects those various changes, so that we have complied with each of the requests that have been provided by the city. So again, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have as that comes up. Brandon Elliott's also present. We also have another employee of Elliott Holmes, who's familiar with the development, to answer any other questions that might be present today. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you.
Anybody else on my left, your right? Yes, sir.
Do I need to sit?
You can stand if you like, as long as you hold the mic, as long as we can hear you.
I'm Reverend James George. We are, I think, F on the agenda, seeking short-term, or approval for a short-term rental located in a new property, 1538 Beach Boulevard, Highway 90. I just wanted to basically show my face and let you folks know that if you have any questions in regards to the project, or anything pertaining to location, or plans, or goals for the future, I'm here to ask or answer any of those. So I appreciate your time and having us here today.
Thank you, Reverend. Anybody else on my left, your right? Mr. Lightner.
Hi, I'm Chad Lightenberger. I'm here today with April King and Shay Ledger. We are owners of the Adventure Tavern, which is on the agenda for today, and we wanted to be here in case anybody had any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lightenberger. I mispronounced your name earlier. I'm sorry for that.
Right, okay, sir.
Anybody else on my left, your right? Mr. Cantrell in the back.
Hello, my name's Cree Cantrell. I presently live at 405 Woodland Park here in Biloxi. My wife, Colby, and I have an item on the agenda today. We're seeking a minor subdivision of a property we own at 1195 Bayview Avenue. I'm here to answer any questions on the project. The matter was proposed by Mr. Creel, and I believe supported by his department. So as I said, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cantrell. Anybody else on my left, your right? Anybody in the back? Last call? Good deal. Thank you very much. We'll move now to the policy agenda. We have a couple of items for first readings. There will be no action today. It's merely a first reading. If the clerk will read item A.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances pertaining to garbage collection and disposal fees.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Mr. Glavin, is there a second? I'll second it. If the clerk would read item B.
Ordinance to grant the establishment of a planned development commercial district master plan with a preliminary subdivision for 955 Motzy Road.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Mr. Glavin, is there a second?
I'll move.
Second by Ms. Newman. Again, this is a first reading. So we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is item C. If the clerk would read that resolution, please.
Resolution granting a waiver of the one-year requirement for recent middle of a denied application for a request for the establishment of a planned development infill district master plan with a preliminary subdivision for 1654 Beach Boulevard.
All right, I believe the motion was made by Mr. Glavin, and a second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Glavin.
I don't have a lot to add to this. I know last meeting, we talked about it. There was some wording we had to clean up a little bit, and there was, the owners kind of appeared before us to give us some additional information that was useful, and so I really don't have a lot to add.
Mr. Guines.
I'm like Mr. Glavin likewise. Think this is a project that needs to move forward. Thank you.
Okie dokie, we'll open it for discussion at this time. Is, are there any comments, any discussion?
Yes, I do. I know this is something we use in the last few weeks, these waivers, which are pretty tough. If they have a reason to be able to use the waivers, new information is not one of them. But the problem we have with this project, it's been on the table since November of '22. They had five different write-ups on this one particular project. And yes, they make an adjustment, they change it, but if you grant the waiver, then you got to go to the next thing, to conditional use. My biggest problem is this stuff that being built was built without the approval of the council. So that's one of my biggest problems I have with these things, when they just stick them on there, 12-month waiver, and the council, if they vote something down, so we're going to, we have no right to vote anything down. The council will always have a 12-month waiver come up. So I mean, you know, the people, when they appeal something, it costs them money. But yet, we can't seem to vote the way we want to vote, where you voted up and down. And I think that takes a lot of power from the council, who sets the laws in the city. We're the ones that do that, and we pay the bills. That's our job. That's why we elected a official to do that. So now I just have a problem with just being back on the table, really to me, for no reason, to fall under the 12-month waiver. Thank you.
Are there any other comments by the council members? My understanding of this, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Abid, that this is, this resolution deals with granting the waiver, correct?
That's right. Just the waiver.
Right. So all we're doing here is granting a waiver, and I think as was evident from the comments made last week, there's really no new information that was being presented that could or should have been presented the first time around. And I believe during the conversation, I believe I heard that there were zero changes. So in terms of the waiver, I agree with Mr. Lawrence. I don't think this meets the requirement to grant a waiver, since there's really no new information. Having said that, any final comments?
I do.
Mr. Glavin.
You know, in all due respect to my colleague, the waiver can bring under consideration if there are new facts, or new information. And what I believe to be facts, maybe my colleague does not, but during discussion, our last meeting, Councilman Lawrence asked specifically, when we didn't have the new information from, from the developer, if a couple of the criteria would be met. And we heard in public comments that they have agreed to meet Mr. Lawrence's request for parking and for the expanded lot. So I think that is new facts. That's just my opinion. I'm one of seven up here. It's certainly, this new waiver thing that we're dealing with is subject to some interpretation by all of us up here, and I'm sure if you ask all seven of us, you may get seven different answers, but I just, that's my two cents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. Any other questions?
The only thing I'm going to add to it, if I may, is I agree with Councilman Glavin on everything he just said. I'll have to agree with, and that's all I have.
And I want to also say I agree with Councilman Glavin myself, and not only that, we did not have a full panel of councilmen here, so now we have a full panel of council members here to vote on it, and that's also a change. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your comments.
Take the supermajority to pass that, so you're right. So you learned something. You went right again. You didn't like that again, did you? There's one question that the Kenny's, the letter they sent into us stated there was no changes. The letter itself that they signed and sent into us. The letter itself that they signed and sent into us. Okay, then they made changes. What you have on the table is not, it's in a resolution. So if you grant the waiver, then you got to change the resolution. Because what's in a resolution is, you know, there's so many of them, I know y'all have no clue, this is the fifth one, and he did make some changes. He did try, he put the park in there, he made the lots bigger. But that's not, that's not explained in the resolution. The resolution still lists everything at 850 square feet. It's not. He changed that, like you said. He listed, he did that. My biggest problem wasn't that. My biggest problem, this stuff was already built before we ever approved it. What was approved was not built the way we approved it. That was, that's my biggest concern.
All right. Apparently there, excuse me, apparently there being no further discussion, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the resolution as presented? All opposed? In opposition, Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Tisdale? Thank you. The clerk would read item D.
Resolution rehearing of July 16, 2024, ordinance to amend the zoning district map for the re-establishment of a PDI planned development infill district master plan with a preliminary subdivision for 1654 Beach Boulevard.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Glavine moved this with a second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Glavine.
Listen, I've looked at the development. Mr. Lawrence brought out a couple of key points, so I'm happy that the developer has agreed to consider Mr. Lawrence's suggestions. I think this is good. I think this is a good development. It meets the need of what Biloxi is looking for. I think it's very marketable. I think it will be very successful, and I think it'll have a positive economic impact on Biloxi. So I'll certainly support the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine and Mr. Guines.
Also co-sign on, Mr. Glavine.
All right, any other discussion? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I think, Jerry, since the resolution states none of these changes, according to this new diagram, but in the resolution itself, none of this is listed as this. It's all listed back as 850 square feet, and that's all you have by. Yes, they did make the changes, but it's good that they put the park in with the buildings, and they made the lots bigger. But you gotta list that in a resolution. This piece of paper in there is just this piece of paper. The resolution does not read any of this in there.
Well, but because that was presented as a part of the package that you're gonna be voting on today, if you vote to approve that, that's the way the subdivision plat has to come to us when they do their final plat. It has to match up with that. If it doesn't, we can't accept it, so.
I understand that, Jerry, but the resolution don't state any of this. So you go, so which one's on the table? The resolution that is written, or just this one picture?
We think it covers both. We think that both are covered. The changes that were made, Mr. Lawrence, were made because you requested those, and they wanted to accommodate your request.
Okay, I appreciate him doing it.
Yeah.
But that still don't cover the resolution the way it's written.
Councilman.
I mean, that's simple, you know?
Councilman, I'd suggest if you want to make an amendment, that...
You have to amend the whole resolution.
No, sir. If you said there's no changes except for the changes you proposed, those are the only changes here.
Yeah.
Those are the changes, the changes you asked for.
Okay, Peter, that sounds great. How do you get rid of what's in there?
I think the exhibit here, which has the parking spaces and the new plat dimensions, that is what's being approved here.
I understand that, so why wouldn't we, why, we just can't write these things right the fuck way? Nobody said anything, what they did was wrong. I'm just saying what's written has nothing to do with one piece of paper.
No, so what it said the no changes were is what they originally submitted. That's part of their language and what they originally submitted. So if we would have changed it, somebody might have complained that that's not what the letter said. So I think it's pretty clear what's happening here, and plus we have a very good record of it, so.
Yeah, I mean, we do, we have five different times we changed this, so. I guess the fifth one, we've only voted on one, and we passed. Let's have my thing, you know, you're gonna do these things, do them right, put the right thing in the resolution, and if it passes, it passes, that's fine. I mean, that's just all I'm telling you.
If this passes, anytime a subdivision is done, one of the last steps involved is that the developer has to go back and have what's called linens and mylar's made up of the final plat. Those are the ones that we record here, those are the ones that we send to the county courthouse. If y'all vote to approve that plat that's in the substitute, the one that you have before you today, then that linen and mylar final plat will have to match that exactly. If it doesn't, then we can't accept it. That's the way it works.
But that was the case, Jerry, then we had two weeks, we could have at least wrote the right resolution together and put one package in at one time. I mean, that's, you know, I'm going to do saying, fine, it's supposed to be that way, but what happened is you decided to go the other way. How are you gonna argue against him if you decided to do something different that's written in the resolution?
We just, we just won't accept the subdivision plat.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Mr. Guines?
I have nothing.
Anything? Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. McGilvery?
I just have one comment. I don't really see anything that's changed in the past two weeks. Mr. Elliott did an outstanding presentation the last time we were here. He asked for two, or was requested to approve two changes to the plat. They both were amenable to do that. It was done, and I'm fully in agreement with this project. That's all.
Okay, Mr. Shoemaker, anything?
Just one thing I'd like to add, and I've only been on here four or five months on the council, but since I've been on and since all the discussion, nobody's shown up in any council meetings, and I haven't seen anything in writing, any emails, or any other paperwork or letters with any opposition to the development.
That's true.
So as far as I know, there's been no opposition. Just wanted to add that, and that's all. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. I have a couple of questions. There will be a homeowners association for this development, correct?
If the, if the owners of the structures do not decide on their own to create a homeowners association, then the entire owners of the properties become the homeowners association. That's the way the language will read on the plat.
And is there, is there some percentage of these structures that have to be occupied before that homeowners association is formed?
Nothing I'm aware of, no, sir.
Okay, and, and I'm also thinking that the city will not maintain the road or the parking area, correct?
That's correct.
All right, and I'm thinking, so the homeowners are responsible if there are costs associated with the parking and the private, the road, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
And I belong to a homeowners association. In a perfect world, everybody pays their homeowner's dues, but it's not a perfect world. And what happens then if I purchase two of those structures? I'm going to use one as a short-term rental, I'm gonna live in the other, and I just don't pay my homeowner's dues? We have an expert coming forward. Hi, Mr. Schwartz. Good to see you again. Go ahead, thank you.
I just thought I might be able to help, because I'll be the person probably setting that up.
An attorney who's gonna help us?
Sometimes I try.
Good, go off of that, thank you, thank you. Go ahead.
So generally, the homeowners association has different rights, and specifically in this particular development, the streets will be private, the parking will be private. The homeowners association has the right to levy assessments against each building or each structure. In the event someone does not pay that, they have a number of different remedies in Mississippi. They have the remedy to file a lien against the unit. They have a remedy to seek foreclosure of the unit, and they have the remedy to potentially file suit to obtain a judgment against an owner that does not pay. You can use those in any combination as the association deems appropriate. So there is quite simply a number of ways to make people pay. I set up homeowners associations for various subdivisions, condominium associations, town homes, and others, and although you're right, we don't live in a perfect world, we don't have trouble getting collections done because there's ways to make people pay, and if they don't pay, there's ways to enforce your rights against their unit. So the maintenance on these type of areas, specifically what you were asking about streets and parking, is very minor, because you're going to have a completed project with new asphalt and/or concrete, and I say that because I haven't looked at the specific building plans. You're going to have an extended lifespan that will exist, so for the first 10 to 15 years, those are normally not issues, other than overlays, maintenance, and those type of things. However, the associations also set up capital reserve funds to address long-term needs that may occur over a five, 10, 15, or 20-year period. So that's a part of the assessments that are done.
And if I purchased one of those units, this would be, how would this be made known to me?
So it's made known through the purchasing process. It is a part of the contract. When those are done, there's normally a notice that says that it's going to be subject to a homeowners association. We record the restrictive covenants in the land records prior to the sale of the first unit, which puts the entire world on notice of those, the same as it would put you on notice or me on notice, even if we didn't own a unit, we could go look those restrictive covenants up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale.
And Mr. Creel, if understood correctly, short-term rentals are permitted by right in this zone. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir, either way, whether this gets approved or doesn't get approved, short-term rentals would be allowed.
Okay, and the minimum lot area for this subdivision, if approved, is roughly 868 square feet?
I think it was added to that whenever he extended the property lines out, but that's the reason they went with the PDI is because it allows flexibility on the size of the lots.
That's correct. Otherwise, if they were gonna go the standard route and didn't have this planned development, they'd need at least 5,000 square feet for a single-family residential.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, those are the only comments I have. With that said, I'll call for the question.
I'd like to ask you.
Mr. Lawrence, final comment. Go ahead, sir.
Right, let's straighten a few things up. First, there is a lady opposition. We all got that on email today. So don't say it wasn't no opposition, there was one sent today. The problem with nobody coming, when the first thing they put on the table was Townhouse, and people actually came and loved it. So in the last 22 months, it's changed all that. And I told people not to waste their time coming, because whether they voted against it, it doesn't really seem to matter. And Jerry, the other thing, short-term rentals are not permitted. Short-term rentals gotta be in the planned development, the PDI, when it's submitted. Otherwise, you got to get a request, have to be submitted, and the planned development PI infill has to be listed when they request what they're doing.
Right.
So, and they didn't request that.
No one has a petition for a rental.
Mr. Creel, if you would, come up to the mics so folks can hear you. Thank you.
I'm talking about short-term rentals. Everything would request a long-term, but in a PDI, to do that, it's a planned development.
Short-term rental is not allowed in a PDI. If the property is on planned development residential, it's prohibited. If it's in a PDI, a PDC, it's allowed as a use by right. We've had no one from Elliott Homes or anyone else approach us about using this property for short-term rental. Right now, what's before you is just to approve the subdivision so that they can sell the individual lots. That's pretty much it.
They request a long-term, I'm saying, it's only listed when you do the original project. As a planned PDI, fine, you listed it as short-term or whatever you want, it's gotta be listed in the plan, that's why it's a planned development. You can't, you can't change it. It don't automatically go, it has to be requested when they do that. And they didn't request that. They said they would rather do long-term, they wanted to sell them, is the reason they're doing what they're doing. So I just want to get that straight, and then to make sure there's opposition, there was, so.
May I say one last thing?
Sure, Mr. Shoemaker.
But I just think I need to respond to that. If there was any opposition whatsoever, I've read the emails from today, I personally saw no opposition to this. Coral Breeze was mentioned in a couple of other emails regarding something else, but I saw no opposition to this. I just want to make sure that's clear, that I'm not saying something that wasn't true.
Let me just add one last thing here. Look at the property we're talking about. Right next door, you've got two hotels. Next to that, you've got a restaurant. Across the street, you've got a restaurant. Your catatonic across from Sharkheads, there are no single-family houses near this property, and that's typically where we get the opposition from, so.
All right, thank you. That concludes the comments. We'll call for the question. All in favor of the resolution as presented? In opposition? Again, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Tisdale in opposition. Brings us to item E on the agenda. If the clerk would read item E, please.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize an existing unit to be utilized as a bar lounge for 2667 Pass Road.
Thank you. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
By Mr. Guines, thank you. Mr. Creel, if you don't mind, there's a conditional use. If you would explain why the conditional use is necessary. The property is on the corner of Eisenhower Drive and Pass Road. It's on the southeast corner. It's kind of a strip mall in there, the old Hobby Lobby.
That's correct.
Freight, something or other, but go ahead, thank you.
This is the tenant space where the Japanese restaurant used to be, they're in that front building on Pass Road, and you know they had a fire in there. So what the new tenant would like to do, well, let me back up. The property is owned NB, and, you know, it wasn't written specifically with this property in mind, but because the property's owned NB, NB zoning is typically next to neighborhoods. That's what it stands for, neighborhood business. So the reason something like this would be a conditional use is if it were located right next door to a neighborhood, then the planning commission, the council, would have the authority to ask, are you gonna have live entertainment? How loud's the music gonna be? Do you have adequate parking? We're not gonna have to worry about people parking in the neighborhoods, are we? That kind of thing. But where they are, they have plenty of parking, they're not gonna have live entertainment, they will have some soft music on the inside, but this is more like a, kind of an arcade slash lounge-type area, so we have no trouble with, planning commission approved it, so.
And Jerry?
Thank you, Mr. Creel.
But what should it be listed? Since, like you said, there's no neighborhood there, what it should be listed? Community business, or what it should be?
Well, I would say, let's look at the mall, for example.
I mean, there's no, like you said, there's no homes.
Yeah. The mall, the mall is owned RB, which allows a number of things to go in there. CB might be, CB is community business, and that's more our tourism entertainment area, so if I suggested anything, it would probably be RB for this property. But again, the fact that this is a conditional use, if for whatever reason we do have trouble, then the planning commission, the council, will have the right to revoke that conditional use permits.
Thank you. Mr. Guines, any comments?
I have none.
Any questions or comments from the council? There being none, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the resolution as presented? That's a unanimous vote, 7-0 for the clerk. Thank you. That brings us to item F on the agenda. If the clerk would read item F, please.
Resolution granting conditional use approval for a short-term rental located at 1538 Beach Boulevard.
I move it.
There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence, and a second by Mr. Glavine. All right, Mr. Lawrence.
This is one of these, this is a block, St. John's, the St. Charles goes all the way back to our show, there's never been short-term rentals in there. I know we've had four paths on the beach, and two of them have been pulled, and we're down to two on the beach. So I'm not, I'm not really a big fan of, just because it's on the beach, make it a short-term rental. And the one, the two short-term rentals that are still alive on the beach, nothing has been built on side of either one of them. A lot of people want to build something on side of a hotel room, that's basically what you're doing. So I'm not gonna spend $700, $800, $1,000 to build a house. So I don't know whether we are affecting the growth on Highway 90 with some of these zones. I'm not really sure. I have a problem with the conditional use. I know you got a driveway put on off Highway 90, which to me was amazing, you had that, but then the application was listed as a resident. When you turn to short-term rental, it's commercial, and it's supposed to go back to MDOT to see if they want to do that, that way or not. But they had a couple of issues to me, and just some of the, the non-conditional use gotta meet them all, there's two of them, to me, three of them, that they don't meet, and I just can't support that. Unless, I'll tell you what they are, I know we're supposed to list that now, and I gotta explain everything to everybody, so.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I ain't finished. I said, there's a, I don't think it meets... Yeah, I ain't finished, I said, there's a, I don't think it meets. The ingress and egress is really tough going Highway 90, that's, still amazing to me that they did that. A lot of people requesting driveways, and they just hadn't done that. So I mean, that's, to me, that's huge, because you figure the crews and the parades, scraping, you can't get out that property. You trapped in, there's nowhere to get out. I don't know why they didn't come from St. John's and not the beach, you know? I just think I have, I have a big problem with that, and none to me, if you, we pass this as a commercial piece of property, they got to go back to MDOT, according to their own rules in the book, to have MDOT approve it as a commercial piece of property, not a residential piece of property. But that's, that's a big concern of mine, right there. It's just, these conditional uses supposed to meet them all, I think it fails on E and H. The condition, maintenance and safety, inconvenience and egress and egress, the conditions allow for the protection of property values. Nobody can prove whether it does it, hurts it, or makes it better. I just know what, when we done these conditional uses for short-term rental, nothing around has been developed. So these are the couple of things to me that stands out big time, because it takes all nine of these to pass a conditional use. And to me, there's three of these that don't make it. That's my opinion, so I mean, I can't, I can't support that. And I mean, if he wants to come up here and tell me what he's done different, I know the, where's the preacher George? I think it was preacher, you were a preacher, wasn't you? Okay.
I would like, to number one, address, MDOT is well aware of our plans, both current and future. When we approached them with the drive, it was not by choice, I really would rather not have put a driveway onto Highway 90. The main reason for that being, I'm well aware of the traffic, we've been here now for, with property for over four years. And even on the corner of St. John, during special events, the intersection there where it is open is always closed to traffic, so you can't turn there. So you're forced to go out and then head east and make a U-turn wherever it's available. We're all aware of that, so the driveway is not going to inflict any further problem to any existence. It does complicate, period, anybody if you're stuck in a driveway, the big obstacle is, you can't go the opposite direction, not that Pass Road during special events is any better. It's all a traffic jam. And so anybody that's staying there, and I'm not looking for renters, we're looking for clients, our idea of short-term rental is not typical, we have families that will repeatedly, you know, reassign or come in, it is, our contracts state very strictly, these are our families, it's not for groups, not for large party events, they are strictly for people looking for a place to stay, but would rather have a home-like atmosphere. And again, with the driveway, the drive is approved, understanding that we are eventually going to be building another unit there alongside of it or home, and it is a shared apron. It will divide into two separate driveways as they enter both properties, but what MDOT did approve was a shared apron. Another thing with that, and just for knowledge, when we purchased the property, for, to my understanding, the existing home had a Beach Boulevard address and a Beach Boulevard driveway, we just moved it over.
Thank you, any other questions?
Yeah, do you own the property off from Collins Street Beach?
The corner of Collins and St. John, correct.
Do you own the one in the middle? The lot in the middle, that's empty.
To the back, or to the?
Yeah, you got Collins, you built on Collins, that's where you stay at.
Correct.
Okay, down, coming up towards the beach, you got an empty lot, do you own that lot?
Yes, on the corner, we, when we.
Not the corner, the one in the middle, isn't there one more, or just one?
No, there's one, the, we're, the current property is the, the 1538 is the middle lot, we subdivided it into three lots, and so the central lot is where the current facility is, the corner is empty at the moment, we actually plan to put our personal home there in the very near future, and then to the opposite side is another equal lot.
You have, you have three lots on Highway?
We have three lots on Highway 90, correct.
I was asking you, do you own from Highway 90 back to Collins, all the land, or there's something in between there, you don't own?
No, the only thing we have is the, on the backside of the cor, of the, between St. John and, or between the highway, Collins is the first lot that we built on, and there on the corner. It had a Collins Street address, and we were, it was recommended to us to change that and move the drive to St. John.
Yeah, I thought, I thought you owned them all, if you should use, come in, they used to do that, come in the back way, all those halls on the beach, most of them.
We looked at, we talked to the Traffic Division, whatever, spoke to them about coming in, I was going to actually pour a drive all the way along the back, that we were turned down and told we couldn't, that it would put too much traffic onto St. John coming from three different properties. And when I pushed the issue a bit, they said if it were possible, that the only way it could be done would be to allocate an actual street for that, which would have required a much larger piece of property and access, and that would have inflicted a problem with trying to build units and meeting the.
Yeah, the streets should run 25, 28 feet.
Correct.
So, that's the difference. My biggest thing is just starting another short-term rental, and a block that never had one, that's, that's my biggest problem with it, not, I don't have a problem with short-term rental, it's just where they put them at, is my problem.
The area is zoned for short-term under conditional use. I've traveled the world, I've been in 83 countries, I've seen both in the US and other countries opposed to what some people may believe. Short-term rentals bring great improvement to especially abandoned properties in more desolate areas, now this is not that, but we did have the option to put apartments there. I'm not a big fan of apartments, I'm not opposed to them, but I'm just, I understand that with short-term rental, I have more leverage with maintaining a high-end client in that property without a problem of getting people in and out, which helps me maintain the property to a higher scale and a higher level. I can also put better security around that property, if I jam apartments in there, they may start out as luxury, but in time, they're eventually going to become what apartments a lot of times do, and you get a lot of riffraff in, you take six months, almost, on average, sometimes longer, to, to get a, you know, somebody out of an apartment, or to have somebody evicted.
All right, thank you, thank you Reverend, appreciate it.
That's it.
Any other, any other questions from the council?
Yeah, that was the one, were they just doing the driveway not long ago?
We just, just finished it.
Just finished, yeah, you had to pull these off, so okay, I want to just make sure I had the right, right place I was looking at when I went out to look at it.
All right, and this is on Beach Boulevard, it has a Beach Boulevard address, Highway 90. Thank you, sir, okay, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the resolution as presented? All opposed? Okay, in opposition, we're Mr. Lawrence, Mr. McGilvery, and Mr. Shoemaker, and it passes on a four to three vote. Thank you, the next item is item G.
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plot approval for 1195 Bayview Avenue.
I'm over.
There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence, is there a second? I'll second it.
Is it where you grew up at, Paul?
When I sort of had hair.
When you had hair and everything?
So I had bangs at the time.
Well, what, you said, what are you doing to the lot, Jerry? I mean, that's one big lot, right there by Turner and Kinston and Tuxedo, a lot of people on the road inside of it, Tuxedo.
Yes, sir, it's, it's at the corner of Bayview and Tuxedo, and what Mr. Cantrell is proposing to do, there's an existing structure near the rear of this property, and what they're wanting to do, he and his wife, are to actually build that, turn that into nice residence back there for them to live in, in the future, they plan to build a house on the front. When he came in, the property's owned a single-family, which doesn't allow two houses to be located on there, but he had enough land under the RS5 zoning to divide it into two individual lots, so he's taking the northern property that's already got this structure on it, and they're going to build there off of that existing structure, and then in the future, he'll come back and build a house on the front lot, that's all it is.
Yeah, because that house sits right on the property line all the way to the back.
Yes, sir.
The whole front porch is empty, yeah.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
That's it.
I have nothing to add, any questions or comments from the council? There being none, call for the question, all in favor of the resolution as presented? It's approved unanimously on a seven oh vote, thank you. Now we'll move to the consent agenda.
I'm over.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence, and a second by Mr. Guines. All right, Mr. Lawrence.
All our insurance is on here today, so everything goes in effect October the 1st, with all the insurance that we pass in today?
Right, those are the same insurance providers we have today.
No, I'm just saying, it just goes in effect the 1st, right? October the 1st?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
Jerry, on the old brick house, you said something about the $200,000, how you going to get the money, you said? That's where you'd restore in the old brick house.
Yes, sir, well, we put some money in the budget this year for getting the outside done. We did get a grant for the roof, Mandy had applied for, and Mandy's here to answer questions too, Mandy had applied for a $60,000 grant, we didn't get that, but we did get $10,000. The city's going to match that, and that will cover the, replacing the roof and any damaged structure underneath the roof, like rafters or something like that. And then we put money in the budget for this coming year to fix the moisture, put the moisture barrier in around the bottom, and also to repair the brick on the outside, and what we're hoping is, if we can just get it waterproof this year, then over the next few years, we can go in and make the interior repairs, and get it back to where people are renting it on a regular basis again.
You have a total number it was going to cost us, beside what you don't have already?
The price we got for the moisture barrier was $160,000, and the price we got for repairing the brick on the outside was $60,000, so it's $220,000 for both of those things, and then the roof is separate from that.
Yeah, I remember at the contritie, we got $674,000 to redo it, they fixed it up, it just, it's like you said, it sits up there right off the bay, it's sucked up that water pretty good.
Yeah, the basic, the basic problem was not repaired at that time, and that's what we're going back to do now.
All right, thank you. On the Q, on Hiller Park, we took up the tennis courts, and were we just filling that in with dirt, and what you planning on doing with that area?
Right, this is where we took the damaged fence that went around the old tennis courts.
Right.
We took it away because it was all ugly, and it's still ugly because the subgrade was a bunch of rock and stuff, so we're just going to put some soil over the top of it and seed it and get a nice grass growing.
Well, do you have any plans for, just?
No plans at this time, been a lot of talk about maybe pickleball courts down the future, the VAs talked to us about maybe doing some things, but nothing is on the, nothing's been agreed to yet.
And, up here on this, you being of is all this surplus land, what are these streets, or what?
They're basically old lift stations that don't exist anymore, so they're, the one on Alice, there was a lift station there, it's not very big, but the, the person who lives in the front of the property, the land's a little bit bigger than this table, so he wants to, people express interest, we tell them this is a procedure, we're going to put it out for surplus and let them bid on it. Penn Oak is kind of back between, behind two lots in Eagle Point, it was on the city's cleanup list, it's not really accessible. And then the Bay Vista property, that was an old lift station, we think that one actually could be, there's enough room there to, for somebody to build a house on that one.
So you, you put it on the market, or is somebody buying all of these already?
No, there's no, we run an ad in the paper, and then we let people know, we send, send some letters to neighbors or builders, people that have expressed interest before.
And there's one, company that cleans up the city, that we hire, my?
Which item, councilman, which?
It goes around, it cleans up the street, it cleans up the stuff, you got them on a retainer every month? I think it's on here today, so what are we doing with them, are we extending it, or we adding more stuff to the cleanup area?
I'm still not getting which council.
Well, let me find it.
I think it's item JJ.
JJ?
JJ.
Yeah, that's it.
That's, that's, that's the Main Street Crossing, that's the last payment on the closeout of the Main Street Crossing, did Gulf Rees, was the contractor on. You remember that almost near million-dollar project that we did to fix the Main Street Crossing so that, where the bus accident was? This is the, the last payment to the contractor.
All right, I was just trying to figure out what we doing with them, you know? All right, thank you.
That's it, Mr. Lawrence?
That's it.
Good deal, Mr. Guines? Ms. Newman?
Yes, I'm glad to see we're doing some work in Hiller Park, but I have not seen Hiller Park on the Capitol Projects line item, so we've been promised that for two years or so, so can I please see something and work on that? Thank you.
Mr. McGilvery, anything? HH.
I'm on a Vista Drive, being repaved, with the assistance of Harrison County, it's my understanding, Christie, correct me if I'm wrong, they're picking up the full tab on that, correct?
100%.
100%, that's what I thought. I think that was a Mr. Supervisor Nathan Barrett project, I want to give him a thank for that.
All right, thank you, Mr. McGilvery, anything else? All right, Mr. Glavine?
I have nothing.
Mr. Shoemaker? Have two items, on item X, on item X. This is, if I understand this correctly, the construction company, Needcase Brothers, is reimbursing the city, is that right?
That's the rail stuff, right?
Just a brief blurb, Christie, if you would, on what this is and how it works, we usually don't see money coming back to us, that's a good thing, keep up the good work.
I don't know about that on this, but we'll see. This is CSX, we have to pay CSX to provide us flaggers and oversight whenever we're working on or near the rail. We build that into our construction contracts, CSX won't allow our contractors to pay them directly, so basically what we do is we pay CSX, and then Needcase will, will reimburse us those costs. This is really just a tracking mechanism, so that we can keep up to what we've been billed versus the money that CSX, the money that Needcase has built into their contract. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me. Good deal, thank you. And the next item is item KK, which is, we're, we're moving money into the city's construction, from the city's construction fund, dealing with modifications on Project 1118, which is the Division Street structure. Can you tell us what those, what are? Can you tell us what those mod, what are, do we know what the modifications are?
Yeah, this is to cover costs associated with building the lean-to down the side so that public works can park their equipment, that, that hole like 300 feet, they'll be able to put pump, bypass pumps and generators and that kind of stuff, out of the weather.
This is all on the Desport's property that we bought?
On the Desport, yes.
So, so we didn't start spending money, so we bought this thing? Okay. Just, just wondering. I just wanted to know if I'd like that deal.
Are there, are there any other modifications planned for this structure? Is this it? Do we?
We're, we're going to actually cover the surface.
Yeah.
We'll cover some of the additions to capital projects in this. We had originally bid of the five million, five point one million. We had 2.25 for that, 2.25 for the fire station. So we're going to clarify that for the capital project.
Excuse me, did I hear fire station?
You heard.
All right, all right, it's not a rumor then?
No, it's not rumor.
Okay.
But as, as we borrowed that money, that's why we would, thought we would split that up.
All right, thank you, thank you, Christie. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions on the consent agenda? There being none, call for the question. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented? It's a seven oh vote. Are there any exceptions? Mr. Lawrence?
Definitely.
That's what she just talked about, didn't she?
Yeah.
KK?
No, no, that's, that was, that was an ex-
Oh.
We're calling for exceptions, so Miss, Mr. Glav, excuse me, Mr. Lawrence.
It was a question.
Ooh, scared you. Mr. Lawrence is in opposition to Item KK on the consent agenda. Anything else, George?
That's it.
All right, Felix, anything?
None.
Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. McGilvery, anything? Mr. Glavine?
No exceptions.
All right, Mr. Shoemaker? All right, and I have none. So that brings us to our code enforcement hearings. Also known as the Jerry Creel Show. It's rising in the ratings. This is, keeps people glued to their seats, and you're fixing to experience that. All right, Mr. Creel, you're on with the code enforcement hearings.
Item A, Biloxi Investments LLC, 382 Lee Street, that case has been resolved. Item B, Biloxi Investments LLC, 251 Strangie Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item C, Coastal Development Group Incorporated, 408 Pearl Street, we would ask for 30 days on that.
Great to have.
There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence for a 30-day extension. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Guines. All in favor? A seven oh vote, thank you. That brings us to Item D on the code enforcement hearings. Mr. Creel?
Corner View LLC, 2348 Pass Road, this property's still in violation.
All right, is there anyone here representing 2348 Pass Road, Corner View LLC? Is there anyone here to speak on that matter? There being none, that hearing is closed. Item E?
Item E, Emmett and Mary Jane Davis, 2039 South Drive, that case has been resolved. Item F, John and Edith Garcia, 402 Clay Street, that case has been resolved. Item G, An and Troe Nguyen et al., 364 Crusus Street, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on the matter of 364 Crusus Street, An Nguyen and/or Troe Nguyen? Is there anyone here to speak on that matter? There being no one, this hearing is closed.
Item H, Ewan and Zan Nguyen, 380 Lee Street, that case has been resolved. Item I, Laverne Seymour et al., 361 Holly Street, that case has been resolved. Item J, Laverne Seymour et al., 506 Marie Street, this case has been resolved. Item K, Bianca Taylor, 509 Austin Street, this case has been resolved. Item L, Martha T. Walker, 362 Bowen Street, this case has been resolved. Item M, Monolith Debt Strategies LLC, 674 Division Street, this property's still in violation.
Is anyone here from Monolith Debt Strategies to speak on the matter of 674 Division Street? There being no one, this hearing is closed.
Item N, Michael Clark Hester, 2592 Old Bay Road, this property's still in violation.
Is Michael Claus, Clark Hester present, or is there anyone here to speak on this matter related to 2592 Old Bay Road? There being no one, this hearing is-
Jerry, I can ask you a quick question?
Closed.
Yes, sir.
On Lund on Oakl, I know you don't want to court, what happened with that?
I'm sorry?
On Lund, it's property on Oaklawn. Had to go to court, yeah.
Yeah, I think that goes to court this month, Mr. Lawrence. I don't think it's gone yet.
It had not.
I think it goes in the next week or two weeks.
It is getting terrible looking.
Yes, sir, it is, it's bad. We have another property on Oaklawn, too, that we're working on, 408.
Okay, thank you.
That brings us to the next item on the agenda, the routine agenda. I'll entertain a motion-
I move.
-by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Guines. Any questions and discussion?
Yeah, Walt's got to be back there somewhere with the checks.
Good afternoon, council. Unfortunately, there's still nothing in the Mississippi PPA website as far as our funding. We did have that conference call with them last Thursday. We are expecting between 850 and 1.3 million to be into the account system pretty soon here, but it's not in there as of this meeting.
And I guess you can explain to the council, since FEMA ran out of money and FEMA's run out of money, I was going to pay our bills on all these projects.
Yes, sir. So FEMA, this fiscal year, the news story is that FEMA has spent all their fundings that they've been allocated from Congress. But our money for the FEMA infrastructure was already obligated and put into the Mississippi DFA Department of Finance Administration back in 2010, 2011. So all that money is up in Jackson, ours for the infrastructure. So we're not relying upon any FEMA budget issues.
So we don't have no problem, it's just a future problem?
The future, the future problems, like we discussed, we've got two project areas that FEMA did not properly estimate for, and we're, we've been meeting and discussing with them about the additional funding for that work. But for our current needs, we have sufficient funding up in Jackson that was, like I said, obligated and put in there back in 2010, 2011.
So what was allocated, we, we can still get?
Sir?
I said, what was allocated, we can still get?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it's all controlled by the state.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. We'll call for the, any other questions or comments on the routine agenda? There being none, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the routine agenda as presented? It's approved on a seven oh vote, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn in memory of George Parks and Bill Lady.
Someone second.
I'll make that by-
I'll second.
Mr. Guines and, and by Mr. Glavine. And then we'll all second it? Everybody agreeable to that? All right, all in favor of adjourning? It's a seven oh vote. We'll take a five or six-minute break, then we'll be back here for our budget workshop, where we'll be speaking with the department heads and the administration. Thank you.